It's 7:30, so we'll call the meeting to order. And would you take the vote?
Sure.
Mrs. Bohan?
Here.
Mr. Conrady?
Here.
Mrs. Steiner?
Here.
Dr. Schulman?
Here.
Ms. Chaney?
Here.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yep.
Well, the records show that Dr. Sigwala is absent.
Then we'll go to the pledge of allegiance. And I would ask Shar Allrick, our Nasonville Elementary Principal, to lead us in the pledge.
Moving to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Shar. Okay, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. And the first item on there is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on September 11th, 2019.
Oops, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
In a second, from Sam Steiner.
Is this just the minutes?
Just the minutes. And is there any discussion or questions? Then we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Abstained.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Then we'll move on to approval that counts from the month of September. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mark. And a second. Sam Steiner. Any questions? Then we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Do we have any communications from the public?
No.
Any correspondence?
No.
Okay. Then we'll move right ahead to the superintendent's report.
All right. I've got a few items to begin with. This week, October 6th through the 12th, is Wisconsin School Board Appreciation Week. I wanted to take this opportunity to speak a little bit about the role of our school board. This special week serves as a time for public school districts across the state to recognize and honor our local board members for their contributions to the education of children in our communities. So on behalf of the school district of Marshfield, I wanted to take the opportunity to extend our collective appreciation to all of you, our school board members, for your service and commitment to the Marshfield community. And with it, I guess I would ask for those that are in the crowd here if we could give this group a round of applause. And as long as we're talking about school board members, I'm going to go off script and slip in a little piece that we... It just so happens that our board president, Frances Bohan, is celebrating her birthday today, so I want to say happy birthday. I think we'll spare you the pain of having me and others sing happy birthday, but that's why you see flowers up at the table and a happy birthday, Frances.
I turned 29. Yeah. Isn't that great?
All right. So continuing on, a few other items. I also wanted to take the time to note that next week, October 14th through the 18th, is recognized as National School Lunch Week. During National School Lunch Week, we acknowledge the significant contributions our school nutritious staff contribute to our kids. This is a critical role that they play in providing a nutritious school lunch to our children in our schools and is a major important piece to the teaching and learning process overall for our students in public schools. But we would like to extend a special thank you to Stacy Wycheck, or excuse me, Wilcock...
Weigelt.
Weigelt. Excuse me, Weigelt, and Melanie Hanneman, our co-directors of Food Service, and their entire food nutritious staff for their hard work and dedication to our students. Today marks the end of a 10-day cultural immersion academy titled Friends From Afar. Grant and Nasonville Elementary Schools hosted 30 4th and 5th grade students, Chinese students, from Zhongxiqiang, China, as part of our MICEP international program that we host here in the school district. Each visiting student is paired with an American buddy from Grant or Nasonville Elementary Schools to work with and interact during school time as well as scheduled activities after school. It's been a great experience for everyone involved over the course of the past 10 days. And I just also wanted to note that it takes a true team effort to provide this friends from afar experience. And we'd like to thank all of our staff members that were involved in this process, including Shalisa Schmidt, Kelly Isaacson at Grant Elementary School, Michelle Junko, and Bridget Reel at Nasonville Elementary School, who assisted with activities and coordination. And obviously, we also want to thank our 4th and 5th grade teachers at both of the schools as well as Mrs. Ulrich and Mr. Domrell, both who are here this evening, our building principals at Nasonville and Grant Schools. And then last, but certainly not least, Janine Schwab, who is our coordinator of the international program. We had a going away banquet late afternoon that I was able to attend along with some of our administrative staff. I think it was a very well-done program and it gave us the opportunity to send our friends from afar off as they're going to be returning home tomorrow early morning. One last item I wanted to report out on is that we have some concerts coming up here in the near future. The Fall Orchestra Concert will be on Monday, October 21st, at 7:30 p.m. And the Fall Choral Concert will be on Tuesday, October 22nd, at 7:00 p.m. Both of those concerts will be held at the high school auditorium.
And then next, we have some gifts to the district. And they include, for Madison Elementary, $250 from Thrivent for the Fun Run Picnic, Playground Balls valued at $50, the Dunk Tank Rental from Peter Harbaugh valued at $200 for the Middle School Homecoming Hustle, and then donations totaling $234 for students in Mrs. Fox's class to receive a book each month from Scholastic Book Clubs, and a framed pennant valued at $200 from the class of 1969 reunion. So there are 50 of the union. And what is the board's desire regarding these gifts?
Accept those great things.
Thank you, Dale.
Second.
In a second, Mark. Then we'll go ahead and take the roll to accept those gifts.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll move on to our committee reports, and we'll start with curriculum and instruction. I'm going to pass you the cable. We met on September 25th, and we did look at a mental wellness app that we had talked about at a previous meeting. And Jody Chernacki provided an update. She's from the Marshfield Clinic Health System. And on feedback that she received from student focus groups on the app's layout, the content, the students didn't have any input on the content. That was provided by an extended group of professionals from different locations that did that. And so these were all mental health professionals that did it. So they really just engaged students on how the content worked for them and whether it was attractive or the colors, that kind of thing. There is a request to load the app on district-issued iPads for middle and high school students. So we do have a process already by which apps are vetted before they go on our hardware for students and families to use. So we had talked about that being a possibility for a process to use for whether or not that would happen. And then students will be given the opportunity to design an app icon that would be used. The winning design will be selected by the MACY or MACI Mental Health Group, Marshfield Area Coalition for Youth Mental Health Group. So that's pretty much the update on that mental wellness app. Then, and we did look at some of the content that was provided by professionals. Then there was an update on instance of student vaping at the middle school and high school. I think from a board perspective, there was more interest in finding out how we handled that. And we do use the same protocols pretty much at both the middle school and the high school that involve school-issued consequences as well as citations from the police department. So the numbers were low 30s at the high school and a handful at the middle school. Then we looked further at how we're addressing that issue in the schools, and there are a lot of avenues. The Healthy Choices Curriculum, the ACP Lessons, an awareness campaign with posters. Officer Barris has been presenting to classes, athletic practices, co-curricular clubs. He's been presenting to staff, et cetera. So there's an ongoing effort to let kids and staff know about the consequences and what that entails and the fact that we are a safe zone, that vaping is not permitted on school.
May I have a question about that? And so those classes are not merely the consequences in terms of punishment, but the health consequences of vaping?
They're informational for kids.
Yeah, okay.
It's too educating.
Yeah, about the health risks.
Just like we do for cigarettes and all kinds of other things in life.
Yes.
And then we looked at personalized learning program proposal for middle school. And that is something that would start next year with a 7th and 8th grade pod that would be dedicated with about 75 students from 7th grade and 75 from 8th grade that would have more project-based learning and self-paced learning and self-directed learning, but they would still meet all the standards and have to know all the same things all our other students in all our other classrooms do. It would just be more tailored to how that student learns. And there would be teachers in all the core subjects within that area to provide direction and instruction on those topics. So, and to help them with the projects they choose and how they choose to present what they've learned and their deadlines, et cetera. We have some future agenda items, and I might add on the personalized learning proposal for the middle school that in executive session just before this regular meeting, we did share that information and had the people from the school district that are involved with that initiative educate the whole board on what that entails so that everyone's aware of what's going on. So we thank them for doing that. That's it.
Okay. Action items. Any other questions for that to me?
Then we will move on to facilities, safety, and transportation.
All right. Yes, we did meet. Part of our meeting was ATM machine at the Marshfield High School. It's aging. Simplicity would like to replace it, and Ron has been working with them to find a new location in the school to put it. And I don't know, Ron, have you come up with a location yet?
Ah, yeah. We believe we have. We're just going to discuss it with them and make sure they're satisfied with it.
An all costs associated with the relocation of the ATM will be covered by Simplicity. Athletic facilities update. Rubberized turf on the track has been completed. Work continues on the baseball and softball fields. And with weather permitting, we're ready to begin work at the middle school. And if we all looked at the weather tonight, rain and chance of flurries. So as far as the busing contracts, they're putting together the bid packets to be sent out yet here in October with board approval in December of who will be getting the contracts for the busing. So that is where we are as far as facilities.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just something to add again for the public. So much focus has been placed on facilities in terms of the football stadium and baseball, softball diamonds and that whole area out there near the high school that sometimes I think people forget that there is more to the facilities update and the monies that are being spent. So that includes things at the middle school such as the demolishing the west stands, I believe, Mr. Sosterman. If I say something wrong, you know, cut me off. Demolishing the stands to the west. Improvements, another track in that area. That track in the past, even though we have one now at the high school, that track has been centrally located in town and has been fairly popular for people to do workouts over there. And we've had some other groups that have pulled events at times over there as well. And there are some other adjustments. I think that area inside the current track, I think, is also going to be filled in, Pat. Is that correct? Yes. That low area, that becomes quite a swamp. So there are other items that are involved in the facilities besides just us building a new football stadium. So the overall package of $11 to $12 million, what it is, isn't just all going for a football field and two baseball softball fields. Just a point of reference, maybe there would be a media story involved there potentially too. I don't know. Thank you.
Thanks, Dale. I believe that's all we have.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to policy legislation.
So we have a number of policies coming forward for action tonight. So there's no update, just lots of policies. And I'm going to group them, if I can, in groups of three. So for example, I have the approval of the Conflict of Interest Policy, which is Policy 1130, which is administrative staff, 3230, which is professional staff, and then 4230, which is support staff. So it's the same policy, it's just in three different places. So if that works, I'll just group them. Does that work?
Does anybody object to doing that?
Okay.
All right.
So I'll move on behalf of the committee to approve Policy 1130, 3230, and 4230, which is the Conflict of Interest for Private Practice. And just a note, this is not a new policy. This is just a Neola policy update. So I think the last time we did it was when we did the first round. So.
Any questions? This is from the committee, so we don't need a second. Any questions or discussion? Then we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
So the next one is a policy related to employee anti-harassment. Again, it was just a really small, minor update, and it was a Neola update, so there's nothing appreciable that's changed about the policy. But it's Policy 1662, 3362, and 4362. On behalf of the committee, I move to approve.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing them, we'll take the vote.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes. All right. The next policy is also an update, and it's just to change the contact people and a couple of little grammar updates. It is Policy 2260, Non-Discrimination and Access to Equal Educational Opportunity. And it's a standalone policy. So on behalf of the committee, I move to approve 2260.
Any questions, discussion?
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
So the next policy is Policy 2270. It also is an update, and it's religion in the curriculum. And just an overview of that policy, there's just one paragraph I wanted to read that just sort of explains the policy. "The board acknowledges the degree to which religion often is incorporated into certain aspects of the arts, literature, music, and issues of morality. The instructional and resource materials approved for use in the district schools sometimes contain religious references or concern moral issues that have traditionally been the focus of religious concern. That such materials may contain such references or may concern such issues shall not by itself bar the use by the district of materials. Activities, decorations, or assembly programs may not, however, promote religion." So just highlighting that we're not saying religion has to be absent from schools and can't be promoted in any way. So on behalf of the committee, Policy 2270.
Okay. Motion from committee to approve Policy 2270. Any questions, discussion? Then we'll go ahead and vote.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
All right. So Policy 2420 is a second reading. This is actually a new policy. It's Education for Employment. And really what this does is outlines our commitment to, and it was mandated by the state a couple of years ago for career planning integrated through elementary, middle school, and high school. So it's Policy 2420, Education for Employment. Move to approve.
On behalf of the committee, there's a motion to approve Policy 2420. And any questions, discussion? So does this relate then to the ACP stuff? Okay. Academic career. Then we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
All right. The next one coming forward is Policy 2700.01, School Performance Report. Again, just minor updates to this policy. So it was, it's just a Neola update, nothing appreciable changing about the policy. So Policy 2700.01, School Performance Report, on behalf of the committee.
Any questions or discussion? Then we'll go ahead and take the roll to approve Policy 2700.01.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
All right. The next one is Policy 3139, Staff Discipline, and that's in the professional staff category. Again, an update. It was updated last in 2018. This is a 2019 Neola update. So nothing appreciable has changed about the policy. So Policy 3139, Staff Discipline, coming forward on behalf of the committee.
Any questions, comments? Then we'll go ahead and take the roll on approval of Policy 3139.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
All right. The next one is also for the professional staff. It's in the 3000s. It is a policy on termination, non-renewal, and resignation. And there were a number of changes to this, but it's still a Neola update. It was last updated in 2016, so we're just reflecting best practice and Neola's updates. So it's Policy 3140 regarding professional staff, termination, non-renewal, and resignation, coming forward on behalf of the committee.
Any questions, comments? Okay, then we'll take the vote on whether to approve Policy 3140.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
I'll say yes again.
All right. The next one is Policy 5111, which is Eligibility of Resident and Non-Resident Students. Again, Neola update. So coming forward on behalf of the committee to approve 5111, Eligibility of Resident and Non-Resident Students.
Questions or comments? Then we'll go ahead and take a vote to approve Policy 5111.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
The next one is Policy 5130, which is the Open Enrollment Program. Oh, sorry, 113. Sorry, I'm getting 14. So again, just a Neola update. There are several changes, but this is the second reading. But it is again reflecting Neola's update. It was last updated in 2015. So it's Policy 5113, Open Enrollment Program, coming on behalf of the committee.
Any questions or comments? Then we'll go ahead and take the roll to approve Policy 5113.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
All right. The next one is Policy 5341, Emergency Medical Authorization. Again, just a Neola update, and it just added a paragraph about making sure that the medical authorization form will be kept in a separate, easily accessible, physical or electronic file in each school building or school management system. So that is Policy 5341, Emergency Medical Authorization, coming forward on behalf of the committee.
Any questions or comments? Seeing them, we'll take the roll on approval of Policy 5341.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
All right. The next one is Policy 5512, the Use of Tobacco, and we added "and nicotine" by students. Again, this is a Neola policy. It just added a section about when a student provides documentation from a licensed medical practitioner that the student's use of non-tobacco nicotine products is being medically supervised for cessation, and it complies with Policy 5330, Administration of Medication, then it'll be allowed. That's the only change to this policy. So Policy 5512, coming on behalf of the committee, move to approve.
Any questions, comments? Then we'll go ahead and take the roll to approve Policy 5512.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Just a note on that is while we move this policy forward today, 51, 5512, we also are looking at a really comprehensive, considered best practice from the Public Health Law Center. And so at our next meeting, we're going to look at that. And as we looked at that policy, sort of just preliminarily, we didn't think that by passing this policy, we're going to conflict if we pass the additional policy, it would be an add-on to that. So just so you know that we'll be looking at an additional tobacco-related policy at a future meeting. All right. So moving on, a Policy 6150, Tuition Income. This is just an update, nothing appreciable changed since the policy was originally written in 2016, just a Neola update. So moving on behalf of the committee, Policy 6150, Tuition Income.
Any questions, comments? Then we'll go ahead and take the roll to approve Policy 6150.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.[1685.11]
Then we'll go ahead and take the role to approve Policy 6150.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Giacchides?
Yes.
All right, next we're moving on to Policy 6520, which is the Payroll Deductions Policy. Very small update from Neola. Nothing has changed appreciably, so moving on behalf of the Committee, Policy 6520, Payroll Deductions.
Questions, comments? Then we'll take the role on approval of Policy 6520.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Uh, where am I? Okay, so we are at a Policy 8330, Student Records. Again, just a Neola update. So moving on behalf of the Committee, Policy 8330, Student Records.
Any questions, comments? Then we'll take the role to approve Policy 8330.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Another Neola update, very small update, is Policy 9130, Requests, Suggestions,
or Complaints from the Public. So moving forward on behalf of the Committee, Policy 9130.
Questions, comments? Seeing them, we'll take the vote to approve Policy 9130.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Again, another Neola update, Policy 9150, Related to School Visitors, moving forward on behalf of the Committee, 9150, School Visitors.
Questions, comments? Then we'll take the role to approve Policy 9150.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Policy 1213, Student Supervision and Welfare. There's quite a few updates to this. Again, though, it's a Neola update, and it's moving forward on behalf of the Committee, 1213, Student Supervision and Welfare.
Questions, comments? Then we'll go ahead and take the role to approve Policies 3213.
Ms. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Giacchides?
Yes.
Moving forward next, Policy 7440.
And I'm actually going to put together 7440.01. The first one, 7440, is Facility Security, and 7440.01 is Video Surveillance and Electronic Monitoring. Moving forward on behalf of the Committee, 7440 and 7440.01.
Questions, comments? Then we'll take the role to approve Policies 7440 and 7440.01.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Can we lump the last four together?
Uh, well, I
I'm wondering about that.
We Sure, the last three we can sure lump together, it's all related to school safety. 8410, though, Crisis Intervention. We are going, we are not going to move to approve tonight, thanks to the eagle eyes of Dr. Schulman. She realized in the very last sentence, it references a policy that we don't have. So we have to figure out what that is, and we have to connect with Neola. So we are not going to move forward, 8410, Crisis Intervention. The last three policies are all in the 8400s, School Safety, Child Abuse and Neglect, and Threats of Violence. So on behalf of the Committee, I'm going to move to approve 8420, 8462, and 8462.01.
Any questions or comments? Then we'll take the role to approve Policies 8420, 8462, and 8462.01.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
That completes my report. Policy is fun. And just wanted, we have a future agenda update, which is going to be kind of exciting. We're going to have our update on the implementation of the new cell phone policy at the November meeting, so stay tuned for an update on that. And that concludes today's report.
This is not a new agenda item, this is simply a comment on the policy or on the committee that we're on. I would like to thank the members of our Policy Committee for going through and doing this seemingly a very thankless job of just updating policies that have not been updated for a long time.
The first reading was just grueling.
And do not even necessarily, have not even necessarily, I would guess, in some cases, met with current practice because the policy had needed to be rewritten for a long time. And a thankless job. And I, I, I'll tell you one thing, I'm glad I'm not on the committee.
But there's some nerds that kind of enjoy it.
Yeah, we're actually excited about it.
I guess, if I may add, just, you know, for the public that may be watching the meeting and people in attendance, that that was a lot that we went through, and it, at this point, gives the appearance of a, of fast work. But I, I think it's important to note that the Committee has been working on that list of policies for multiple months and has many, many hours of time put into reviewing that. And we were able to move that quickly because of all the prior work that the Committee put in.
Exactly.
Just to add to your comments, Dale. And then one other piece that I guess I'd like to note is, because Ms. Chaney made multiple references to Neola, just to explain that a little bit further for the public, Neola is a group that the school district contracts with per board approval to review the numerous and regular legal changes that are happening at the state and federal level to be able to inform us of how we really need to be updating these policies to stay in line with state statute changes, for example. So that, we're fortunate to have that service available to us to keep an eye on all of those numerous changes that are happening pretty regularly.
And just to add on to that, so we went with Neola
Couple of years ago.
Three or four years ago. That was the heavy lift because we had to go through all of our current policies, which were sort of homegrown and not necessarily all compliant with state and federal law. So we, so at that time, we went through absolutely every policy, and it was a really heavy lift. But now, even though we went through a lot of policies, we've got so many, it's just, it's easier updates, we're adding a sentence or a phrase or, so it's, it's, it's much easier now. It was a really good investment on behalf of the District to do that. And my last comment is, I always get complaints when I just lump all the policies together. So that's why I went through it, so people could see what policies were passing. So my apologies for that lengthy update. All right.
And again, a very necessary thing that the Board has to do from time to time is to go through and look at policy. It seems pretty boring, it seems a little pointless, it seems like a lot of gobbledygook on paper, until the mud hits the fan on some specific issue that's involved in policy, and we don't have a policy or we haven't updated it. So again, thank you, I'm done.
Thank you. Okay, so we will move on to Employee Relations.
Oh, me again. Okay, persons that were on the Employee Relations Committee are myself, Francis, and Sam. And old business, we had discussed the calendar, the school calendar, and some key dates. That's going to come up for an action item, I believe, here tonight, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And it was, been, been shared with the MTA, and the Great Place to Work Committees, and feedback was taken into consideration. There have been some slight changes in terms of moving some staff in-service days. The one thing that has been an issue almost every year in terms of a calendar date besides vacations, or whatever you want to call them, breaks, is when graduation should be or could be held. I think there is a belief probably still in the community that graduation is always held on a, on a Sunday, and that it's going to be 2:00 in the afternoon. Well, that's not necessarily correct. The Board and the Committees have the right to change to either Saturday or Sunday, depending upon how things fall calendar-wise. And, for example, this year, I believe we are going with a Saturday graduation, and that, in that case-
Current school year that we are in, we're on a Sunday at 2:00.
I'm sorry.
The calendar that we're about to talk about is-
Is a year in advance, yes. I'm sorry. I apologize for that. But it just goes to show that there will be potential changes, depending upon how things fall on the calendar. Lot of, not necessarily complaints, but comments from parents and students and people even who have businesses, as to when we should be holding that. And so we're trying to be as flexible as policy, or as possible, with dates because of family travel on holiday weekend and so on.
Well, may I add that-
Sure.
That there's a lot of considerations when we look at that, and that's the reason for the flexibility. Some of it is WIAA State Playoffs, and some of our seniors sometimes have to choose between being at their graduation or going to state. We've had other things come up, just with other events in the community on that date that some of our students are involved in, et cetera. And, but the holiday weekend might be. So when we look at an individual year, we really felt that it was important to have the flexibility to consider all of that, and do what we felt was best for everyone, so that as many kids and families could be there as possible. But always aiming for that middle of the daytime, so family can come from other towns and get home at a reasonable time, et cetera.
And again, to clarify to the public, to, in case there was any confusion in something that I said, this is for the 2020-2021 Academic School Calendar. Some of the greatest hits for staff will be, the usual professional staff development days will be from the 24th through the 27th of August. The first day of school for students, a year from now, will be the 1st of September.
Yep. Which, September 7th?
That's correct, September 1st.
September 1st. September 7th is Labor Day.
And it's going to be before Labor Day this, that year.
Right. So we'll be having school before Labor Day, which is something that has been different according to this calendar. The other breaks are pretty typical. The winter break, or Christmas break, whatever you like to call it, 24th of December through the 1st of January. Spring break will be the 29th of March through the 2nd of April, and, and so on. But again, that's a year from now, not this current school year. Now, I don't know, we have an action item on this tonight. I don't know if all other board members had a chance for input on this.
Yep, it's in board docs.
We did.
Okay.
But it's been to committee twice.
It's been to committee, exactly. It's been to committee twice.
So on behalf of the committee, I would recommend the acceptance of the 2020-2021 Academic Calendar.
Any questions, comments?
Yes. Only to avoid the confusion like I just did again, you might circle that one as the first day of school.
First, September 1st.
Like all the other important days are at least circled, like the end of the first quarter and the second quarter.
You could just circle the first day of-
Yeah, that is supposed to- I guess, just a few more, if I could add just a few more details to what you had explained, Dale, is that for the next school year, we're, we're coming up on a unique situation where Labor Day falls as late as it possibly can, which creates a, a unique calendar where we start as early as possible on that September 1st. But it puts us with a, we're targeting a relatively early end date for that school year then, which this calendar shows as being Wednesday, June 2nd. Where graduation, why that's unique to the graduation situation is, in recent years, graduation has moved off of Memorial Day weekend. If that were to be the case with this calendar, we would actually be looking at a graduation after all school is done, which is not typical. So this calendar does recommend placing graduation on the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend. And the committee did talk about the fact that, as Dale was explaining at the very beginning of your report on this topic, is that we're looking to address graduation placement on a case-by-case, year-by-year basis, depending upon how the overall calendar comes out. So that means, like the current year, it could fall on a weekend after Memorial Day weekend, and the proposal for a year removed would be that it goes on Memorial Day weekend. And because of that shift, potential shift from year to year, that also incorporates a Saturday versus Sunday placement. So, in some occasions, right. So the current school year we're in, graduation will be Sunday at 2:00, the weekend after Memorial Day weekend. The next calendar proposal that we have here before you for the year after would put graduation on Saturday, 11:00 AM of Memorial Day weekend.
And that would preserve more time for families for that extended weekend.
Remainder of the holiday weekend.
And that is a departure from previous sort of traditions of having it on the Sunday of Memorial Day weekend. But I think it's a nice, family-sensitive change, so that we can preserve some of that holiday weekend for other, other activities than graduation.
And the 2:00 PM time was also a tradition based upon making sure that people had the opportunity to fulfill their, their church obligations and so on, on that Sunday, if they, if they choose to, so.
And we did discuss that as kind of the only regularity that we would try to stick with, is that if it's on a Saturday, it'll be 11. And if it's on a Sunday, we'll put it at 2:00. So that's, but other than that, it's going to, it will probably bounce back in just-
Depends on the cal-
On the calendar, yeah.
And unique challenges for that year.
Will it ever not be on Memorial Day weekend? Yes. For example, this weekend, this, this year, it will be the weekend after, yeah.
As the calendar moves.
And as it was last year, yeah.
Any other questions? Then we'll go ahead and take the vote on Approval of the Calendar for 2020 to 2021 School Year.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Cunardie?
Yes.
Ms. Steiner?
Yes.
And hopefully, this gives everybody plenty of time to plan ahead, so you both plan a wedding.
Get it done.
With the family on the same day as graduation for another wedding.
Have a good one.
Thank you, everyone. Then we will move ahead here.
We have Finance Committee.
Yes. And so, Finance.
Okay, we did meet tonight. We had an update on the high school chiller repair and insurance claim. As we all noticed, last summer, we had an inch and a half pipe come apart, 1,800 gallons of lipo to the floor. So they're working on getting everything put together with the insurance company. They're very close with it. They've still got a few areas to go. Plus, as they have taken a look now at the chiller, and looking at some of the repairs that were made to it, and looking further down the line to some of the piping, they see some spider cracking coming. So they've got some work ahead of themselves that Ron's going to have to address. And they look at the pumps, the pump system, they got his older pump system. So when the pumps come on, you jar the pipes very hard. So Ron's looking at taking, changing out the pumps, because the pumps are older, they won't accept a variable frequency drive out, which ramps the motor up slow. So he's looking at new pumps and putting a variable frequency drive on it, so he can bring the pumps up slow, we get rid of that jarring, especially on that older pipe, which should help him with life to come out. And also, Ron assured us that, as the future goes, if we ever have to do, or when we do other work with the chiller, these pumps will still stay and be used. So we're not putting bad money out. We're putting good money out here for the future. So that's where we're at with the chiller. If you took it, open enrollment trends, you go on the site, you can see that we're at 313 students in, 130 students out. But, if you page down, you can see where a lot of the students, where they're coming from, and where they went. So take a look at that, and that's very good. Update on the 2019-2020 Budget and Discussion of Certification of Levis. Correct me if I'm wrong, but October 23rd, you'll, we'll have a vote on that, and we'll know, we'll know where we stand. And I believe we're looking at not as much in the taxes to the-
Yeah, there'll be a huge increase in tax rate.
So that is a very good thing, with extra money coming in from the-
To the local taxpayers.
Yes. So-
And that meeting will dovetail with committee meetings, I think, on 23rd.
So I don't know if anybody has anything else to add.
On facilities?
Yeah. On, on finance.
On finance, no, that's right. We went by facilities already. Sorry. I can't help it, because I keep looking at you, and I think of facilities, and I see that giant fly over the top of your head all the time. I was going to ask that maybe we move that piece of art next time around, it's a huge fly on the wall. Never mind.
It's very realistic.
All right, then I guess we're good.
Thank you very much, Mark. Then, new business, we don't have any retirements.
Correct.
Okay, but we do have some resignations.
Okay, I think we do all the resignations listings at once, correct? Resignations, Amy Dismet, Teacher Assistant and Interpreter at the Middle School. Angela Hardisty, Health Assistant Teacher and Regular Education Teacher at Lincoln. Michael Lacy, School Psychologist, Elementary and Early Childhood. Mary Peterson, District CLC Program Coordinator, and that's a district position. Peggy Stillman, Teacher Assistant, Special Ed at Masonville. So as an individual board member, I move that we approve these resignations.
And a second by Sam Stein. Okay, any questions or comments? Then we'll go ahead and take the role to approve those resignations.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Cunardie?
Yes.
Ms. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Okay, now that we're getting further into the school year, we're not going to see quite as many new hires, I believe. So we have two people for Approval of Employment under new personnel. Lori Babcock, who will be a custodian in the second shift at Washington, replacing Rhonda Haisley, I believe, Haisley or Hoesley. And also Mindy Amas Parmenter, who will be a Teacher Assistant, Early Childhood Teacher and a Transportation Aid and Special Ed. The Early Childhood Position Teacher Assistant is at Grant. The Transportation Aid is for the district. The people who are being replaced are Melanie Kretschmer and Seth Cunningham. Questions? Okay.
Is there a second?
A second.
And Sam Stein, you're second at the motion to approve those employments for new personnel. Then we'll go ahead and take the role.
Ms. Giacchides?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Cunardie?
Yes.
Ms. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
And just for the record, I did make the motion, correct? I made the motion. We got a little ahead of ourselves here, but, okay.
Thank you very much, Ms. Giacchides. We don't have any old business, but we do have a couple overnight and extended trips that need approval. And the first is travel to New York City in June of 2020. And the expenses for the teacher chaperones would be covered by the fees collected from participating students. And so it's basically for those high school students that are interested in drama and the theater, and what is the board's desire regarding that trip.
I move to approve.
Thank you. And a second?
A second.
Okay. So a motion by Mark Cunardie, and a second by Dorit Chaney. Any questions or comments regarding the trip?
No, I think it's, I just want to comment, because my, my kid has been on a trip very like this, probably this trip. And the only drawback really is that they come, there's a risk of them coming back with a real love for New York City, really needing to go back to see more Broadway. But no, it's a great experience for the kids, and they get to meet real Broadway actors and real Broadway directors, and it's very cool.